Five thirty, please join us in the public.
Ode allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Next item on the agenda is the special activity. We have people here interested in that, but Matt moved that to the top of the agenda so you all can enjoy this minute and then leave if you would like, or you can all stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like also. So if you would, please stay in. And if I...
You gotta get him to the condition first.
We do have a recommendation to promote Joel Lawson to the position of probationary captain effective November ninth, 2024 at the CBA rate of thirty-four ninety-six. So if I could have Joel come forward and make a motion. Is there a motion? There's a motion to hire Joel into this position. Some move.
Second.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yay.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yay.
Mr. Wade.
Yay.
If you would, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Joel Lawson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will fully discharge the duties.
That I will fully discharge the duties.
Required as captain for... Captain of the Clear Creek Fire District.
Required as captain of the Clear Creek Fire District.
Clear Creek Township, Warren County, State of Ohio.
Clear Creek Township, Warren County, State of Ohio.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
During convenience of my lawful employment.
During convenience of my lawful employment.
Congratulations. Does anybody want to come up and take a picture? We've got time. We do have one more quick activity also. Matthew to administer the oath of office to Joel Lawson.
No, no, no.
Oh, no. Yeah, I put that right on the counter.
Yes, the gentleman here can thank the crews for responding to the emergency statement under public comment.
You have what you want.
Yeah.
And here he is.
Here I am. All right. All right, thank you. I'm gonna do the best I can here. Usually I'm not one for reading, impromptu, but I know I'm gonna cheer up. This is important and thank you. Thank everyone for being here. President Wade, Vice President Gabbard, trustee Mearsfall, fiscal officer. Haroldus? Fantastic. My name is Randy Bertram. I reside at seventy thirty-nine Ashwood Court, Springbournes. I'm here tonight with my wife Sandy, my daughters Mindy, Courtney, and seven of my grandkids, and there are more that are here tonight. Camden, Braden, Ella, Nolan, Garrett, Grayson, and Brooks. We are here tonight to express our profound gratitude to some of your exceptional staff members who on September twelfth, twenty twenty-four, saved my life. That morning, I underwent a standard operation for gallbladder removal at Kettering Hospital. Came home about two-thirty in the afternoon. Sandy and I came home together and I rested for a few hours. Got up about five o'clock, walked into the kitchen, and completely collapsed. I remember nothing other than walking into that kitchen. I stopped breathing. Sandy immediately called nine-one-one, and the dispatcher on the other end expertly guided her through and administered chest compressions while staying on the line with her. Within just three minutes, Officer Stephanie Williams arrived, defibrillator in hand. She quickly took over the chest compressions and instructed Sandy on preparing the defibrillator. Within the next two minutes, paramedic Scott Bunker and Aaron Kidd arrived to assist. I was still not breathing, but they used the defibrillator, and at that moment, I came back to life. I rushed to Kettering Main Campus where they discovered a ninety-nine percent blockage in my main artery, the widow maker. Thanks to their quick actions, I was in surgery shortly afterwards to remove the blockage to place a stent in. I'm here today standing before you because of their dedication, skill, and selflessness of these amazing first responders who overcame a twelve percent odds of keeping me alive. There are no words to fully express the gratitude that Sandy and our entire family feel for these individuals. They gave me a second chance, a new lease on life. We can never truly repay them, but we want them to know, and we hold them in high esteem and regard beyond any measure of compensation. The work they do is a labor of human passion, a testament to their commitment to saving lives, and it means more than I can express. So to Officer Stephanie Williams, paramedic Steve Bunker, and Aaron Kidd, and that remarkable dispatcher, who I'm still trying to figure out who that was.
He's right here in the front room.
It truly gets from God, from the bottom of my beating heart, thank you. I'll never forget it.
Any of the crew members that were there that day wanna come up and get a picture with Officer Williams and Carmen?
Thank you.
Okay, did I have the wrong name?
Nope, the two were on the... Okay, okay. And?
Carmen.
Carmen.
I'd like to thank all of you for attending, and I thank everybody involved who are with you every day. I've been involved with two departments, the fire and the emergency police.
And the dispatchers.
And the dispatchers. The untung heroes, they don't get enough credit. Thank you for coming, guys.
Thank you.
The rest of our meeting is going to be quite anticlimactic.
You all welcome to stand there.
Where do you live? Okay. Yeah, get your information, Matt, if you live with... Steve Beck and Brooks.
Steve, straight on the phone?
I'm here. I'm trying to make sure that we got you okay. What? I'm going.
When it's... When it's divorced, it's whatever the ceiling got hurt.
Yeah, he got me. I might get in their car.
That's a pretty cool story that he told.
You wanna hang a tape right on that?
In their car.
Help you or...
I'm pulling that right now.
I guess it's probably a good idea.
Yeah, we tried.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the... Senator, if I have anything like that. I do not.
I do not.
Just the business. Russell?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things for you this evening. One is a supplemental appropriation that I have to have for the... To enable the next piece of legislation. I try to guess each year how much the amount will be for the transfer for the property tax paid out. I didn't quite guess enough, so I had to add some money to that. So that's resolution fifty-five fifty-three. It's here for your action this evening, sir.
If I have any questions about fifty-five fifty-three, it's like the amount is over twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, it's...
Twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty.
Yep, that's a winner. Twenty-seven five thirteen.
Is there a motion to approve fifty-five fifty-three?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yay.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yay.
Mr. Wade.
Yay.
And with that in hand, now we can go ahead and do fifty-five fifty-four. This is the transfer from the general fund. We used to make payments to Springbrough, and then we changed the coterminous agreement to allow Springbrough to help offset the cost of station... The building of Station Twenty-four by taking that money. It would've gone to the coterminous agreement. They'll pay for that. So it was originally five million dollars. One and a half was spent on the land itself, and that left three and a half million left to be transferred. So as an attachment on there, you can see that we have, let's see, three and a half million. Somebody's got it over there, but there's still like three and a half million left after this payment.
Two point seven.
Two point seven? Thank you, Matthew. So this particular one is for four hundred and... What's in that for?
Three ninety-five.
Three ninety-five, yeah. Three ninety-five, four hundred for that year. So...
Is there a motion to approve fifty-five fifty-four?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Mearsfall. Yes. Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Anything else, Russ? Nope, that's it, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have new business. We have resolution fifty-five fifty-five.
Yeah, so this is the first reading of our twenty twenty-five appropriations resolutions. Generally like to slow down and not dispense with the second reading or declare an emergency for the budget whenever possible. Just to get the maximum amount of time if anybody wanted to make input on it for... For these tweak things to the first reading and the second reading. We tend to do the second reading the second day in November, just like the board is taking effect periodically towards the end of December. Some highlights from the budget resolution if the board is interested in it. We've got about a one percent drop in the general fund budget between twenty-four and twenty-five. We do have twenty-five thousand appropriated in the parks budget to do some repair and improvement of the entryway at Trishy Allen Park. Got some concrete starting to crack around there, and papers and that little bit like they're sagging a little bit. So we'll give that a little bit of attention. We definitely have salt appropriated for this and the end of twenty-five season with the appropriations under there. We were able to squeeze out approximately a million bucks for paving again this year. Important to make that investment in the Orion alternative treatments that he's found with the case ceiling. We're gonna be able to give that some substantial attention again, so... The police department is... We were able to massage that budget and keep it flat. Had modest estimations cooked in for the fire department for the opening of Station Twenty-four. Things like utilities and repairs made and that sort of thing. There are... Going to blow in the fire. There are six personnel that are included in the personnel budget for that in an effort to try to control costs better there. Four of the six are actually firefighters in empty conditions. That is what we seek to staff, finish staffing Station Twenty-four for the most part. Overall, the budget dropped as expected with not having the huge cash outlay for Station Twenty-four. But it drops from about twenty-eight point three million in twenty twenty-four to about twenty-three million in twenty twenty-five. And that's personnel as well as all other categories. You have any specific questions about the budget? I'd be glad to answer them.
If I have any questions?
The department has worked very hard. We'll get it.
Thank you very much. I don't even think... Even one of the reasons just that a bunch of people say that we have received the first reading.
Sure. Yes.
Is there a motion to approve fifty-five fifty-five for the first reading of the twenty-five?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yay.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yay.
Mr. Wade.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have resolution fifty-five fifty-six authorizing a township administrator to the obligations where you make ten thousand dollars on behalf of the township in the stretch of the second reading.
Yeah, this is actually a little more complicated than it usually is because there are five different individual purchases on this inquiry obligation. Some of them are newer that you haven't really heard of, so we'll just take a lot of time. The MBL lighting agreement, I don't think you need a whole lot of explanation on that. It's just the unmeted street lighting intersection of districts that are in the MBL territory, the AES territory. The second one is the chemical lawn care treatment at Trishy Allen for twenty-five. The total cost of that is like sixteen thousand miles, so exceeds my before. Glad to answer a question for either of those two purchases under that resolution. Well, there are three purchases for the police department that resolution makes you, Terrell, to... Number three is the drone program, which you did know was coming. It was on funding for both low, taking the eagle approach, trust about funding for that. And the last component of funding for that is going to come out of Law Department Trust, which is an appropriation fund that we've continued to drive through the budget year after year after year for funds that were acquired long ago. But if this is what you expect for an appropriate category, then that's what we'll let the chief say.
I think question would even more have to answer. I thought you talked about drones previously in the management act since our last meeting. There's been a couple agencies that... Trenton had a couple... Had a police officer hit by ATV. He had two officers hit by ATV. They had a drone, they were able to pull a drone out down by the river and use thermal to locate the individual that hit them. So it's... It's like it's gonna be a good tool for us and excited to bring that on. So I appreciate your guys' consideration.
Are you going to... Have any of those people trained and authorized to use?
Yeah, we got... Also, Bronberg is already a pilot. Just so happened, Springbrough is in conjunction with the company that bought the drones from us putting on school because they use the same drone that we purchased. That school, I think, starts next week, and we've got three in that. So one of about four pilots, one on each ship, and one on flat ship. So and it certainly has something to be... Some pictures taken or something, whatever the fire department would want to have to help out with.
All the areas that we...
We can show you where you're working and take some photos of that for either one of us.
The bowl gets loose.
Or we get that bowl again. Yeah, you laughed about that.
I'm not laughing. I'm not laughing. I mean, we spent two weeks looking for that bag on there. We can find him in fifteen minutes now. Big eater.
Well, it'll be a great tool. You know, we get the other purchases.
Matt, did you ever get the other purchases?
If the board wants to talk about it.
I do, yeah. I mean, the radar detectors and the silver auto is the only one that I...
Yeah, the radars, we've got an issue coming up next year with some phase out of the particular companies we use. Sergeant Bates is in charge of that. He brought that issue to me. Wasn't necessarily a budget item, but I had enough money left to go ahead and tap that this year and just get those changed out. So that was a reason for having to come up with six of those at one time because we have the issue in the future. We budgeted three cars purchased this year. You know, twenty-three to twenty-four, we had all the issues with can we even get a police car? We carried in some twenty-three money to buy cars that we... You guys gave us permission to buy in this twenty-four season. So again, there's a little bit of shortage of police vehicles. In this case, we're gonna pick up the pickup truck. It's gonna go to the detective section. Detective Sergeant Barrett will have it. I'm another person in the detectives, but the caseload's getting pretty heavy in there, especially with child victim crimes and stuff. So we're gonna be adding somebody in there. We're gonna pass his vehicle down to non-pursuit vehicles. So it's got about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it, but as an officer, I think we can milk that a little bit longer. Don't anticipate any car purchases for next year. I think our mileage looks pretty good.
The silver auto is on the lot that you always do.
Yeah, in this case, we were looking around for a vehicle. We found an agency that had a couple in the lot. They were getting ready to take them to the sheriff's acquisition, and they expected some of them all there at that point. We were able to snag one of those last remaining trucks that is pursued right there for that. So that's where it's gonna go. I had air preparing four cars, and we've got all the changeover from holding up from last year to this year to sell. So we push that back in against the cost of what we're spending here on this. So that's a super bonus of that, so...
This is... It's nice to get your hands on a car, you know, and we would take a lot off the road. It's kind of a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles.
We'll push that one down to who will be put in there as the secondary detective. Except if it's not in long pursuit, it's like we can milk that a little bit longer, so...
Where's that Lally Chevrolet?
It's up north. We've used it before years ago in a purchase. It's been a bit, but they had saved it on it, so it's a good price on the...
Oh, one thorn.
Yeah, give it up clean.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about...
Nothing you'd ever come to react to.
Oh, Lord, God.
Okay. All right, very good. Looks like the next item we have...
We have a pass.
Is there a motion to approve fifty-five fifty-six?
Some move. Second.
Mr. Mears. Yay. Mr. Gabbard.
Yay.
Mr. Wade.
Yay.
And then moving on to the discussion of the noise.
So in your package, you get a blank memo, but Jeff actually burnt it down quite nicely.
Yeah, very.
We've got a couple of different options on the road to go without enforcing it. Some are permissible to go after everyone, and some are limited in scope. So you can go after and you can construct it in a number of different ways. We tried to window down what we found in other sample resolutions, stuff that we really liked, stuff that we didn't like, stuff that we thought was advisable or ill-advised, and come up with some recommendations on how we think we want to proceed with it. And the Quick Notes version of it is, we think we want to pass the resolution to allow either authority based upon what the violation is on a case-by-case basis, whether it's, you know, fits for one, but it doesn't fit for the other one. It'll give township staff the ability to go after habitual offenders in a better manner. It'll give us flexibility to pursue criminally or civilly if the suspect is... Fits a certain category. So the recommendation that I have is to allow maximum flexibility to be able to enforce it in a way that hits the most effectively is what it involves. We did come up with some recommended exclusions. Obviously, when we... High upon us, we act what we're... We think of that nature. But I'm glad to discuss any of the items that were on the members of Jeff.
Anybody have any questions? I don't know if this is necessary, but if we have no one here tonight that's seen this, what's your plan to... Do you want, do we want the public to see this before we pass it? What's the steps to pass this to do with the... Tell me about that.
So you can do it... I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Ross, I'm sorry. We have a couple of options. You could do it as a first reading, or you can do it as a meeting. I can think of four options right now within discretion of our board. You can set it for a specific workshop and say, we're only gonna talk about this. And here's what staff can circulate this memo, and you let people know. Although it's already on the website anyway, right? So anybody who would... So...
Not the memo.
The memo, okay. Well, one's...
We can put it there.
Yeah, we can put it on the memo if that's correct. And let people look at it and say, hey, we're gonna have a meeting on such and such a day. We're just gonna tell all this noise resolution and nothing else. Come all, come talk about it. You don't want to have a separate meeting, you can do it as part of the next week, put it on the agenda. Invite public comment that way. You could do it as a first reading, and then it's a second reading, and then it would become effective for another thirty days after that. So there's a whole bunch of time in there that you put for... If somebody who is paying attention to it and really wants to know about it, you've given them plenty of time to do it that way. But that is... That is your call, not mine. You could... The other way to do it too is you could also, it's perfectly lawful, you pass it as an emergency and off it goes and it's effective right away. Might get some pushback from folks on that, but the bottom line is that I think they... We had a very good call with Jeff and Matt and Chief Terrell, and we had a good discussion and a panoply of options. And, you know, I think this gives you the biggest bang for the buck in terms of enforcing it in a way that is... That allows you to make the right fit and have the right enforcement versus civil versus criminal and so forth.
What do you guys think? Do you want to have... Do you want to move forward and pacify our board? Or do you want to have some public...
Well, I think we're out of the music season per se. We're not gonna be a buzz up for immediate, so we're not... up for immediate. So we're not necessarily in a hurry to get it to happen for, you know, the next month or so. So if, if it would be more valuable for, you know, people to come and get it on the website and have a date with saying, here's your special meeting this morning in Milwaukee. And they can give us thoughts as we consider what's the best for the township.
And I will tell you, I think involved a number of jurisdictions who have chosen to have noise resolutions in place, chose not to have noise resolutions in place, chose to enforce it by decimals, chose to enforce by reasonableness. This is a tough area to legislate. And once you pull a string, you know, another string, another jenga piece falls down and so forth. So it's, you know, I think the staff's been very thoughtful here to address the needs of the township. And I know the trustees will be as well. And so, yeah, we're happy to do it however way you want to do it. But I think we've looked at, oh, I don't know, seven or eight at least, and probably more when you, we've actually looked and pulled seven or eight, but we've looked at more than that, forty, thirty-five, forty across the state for sure. And I believe those are other, for other clients too. So we've got, you know, we think the best of the options for the township. But again, that's your call, right? Because what's right for, you guys know what's right for the township better than anybody.
Any of the townships?
Oh, yeah, we've got, I mean, we've liberally, I think frankly, Hamilton, my jurisdiction where I live, has a pretty good one.
And we have a decimal here?
That we do.
And have we used it at all?
We don't have to. We would have to probably purchase some other cars. It's probably the most cut and dried way to make the decision. The reasons for what's reasonable, or is to me, may not be reasonable in this view. So if we set numbers and it's above that number, it's pretty cut and dried. So it's my recommendation, we'll look at the decimal.
So the chief's point about that, I agree from an enforcement perspective. And the other thing too is, you'll be amazed at how much folks think something's too loud. You put a, a decimal meter on it and it's ambient. An ambient, people don't get it, but ambient's somewhere between forty-five and fifty, depending on what scale you use. But it's between forty-five and fifty. So you just ambient. And so the reasonableness, that gets into a proof fraud. Because I've seen cases in looking at for other jurisdictions where somebody called and says, this is unreasonable. Officer's right, says it's not unreasonable on me. And court goes, officer says it wasn't reasonable to them. You know, so I think you put the officer in a terrible position there. So I think the decimal makes sense to, and if it's, if that number doesn't work, we can always fudge with the numbers. But at some point, that's all you can do and say, here's what the decimal level is.
And the current discussion is to have the decimal reading done at the property line.
Yes, yeah.
So they have, in the center of their property, four hundred feet from boundary, it still has to meet the same at the property lines. They had it ten foot from the property.
Good point.
So we're trying to make sure that they contain their activity, but the activity is not falling upon the meters, whether it's right away or during property or distance. That's where we thought maybe equitable.
You have to clearly define correctly. You've got property line, you've got an actual decimal allowance. That's important. The reasonableness, that is a terrible signal to use, in my opinion.
And I would suggest a third too, which is time, because what's reasonable to go on at two P M. is completely different about what reasonable to go on at two A M. in terms of quiet enjoyment. So there's also an hours, you know, comp order as well.
And during those hours, there is extension with that. So if you talk about construction equipment, you know, we're expecting that during its time of work, just as agricultural, occurs and has noise, you know, construction is going to have noise. As long as it's valid construction noise, they have taken off their mufflers, they have increased alarms to the normal activity, it's going to be able to pursue and do it during prescribed hours. After those hours or before those hours, that's to fall back to our expectation for noise. So that should help out with the lawnmowers that are trying to get going early in the morning, construction's going on in the weekends, those types of things that help bring back to, okay, this should be a good neighbor responsibility to return to enforce as opposed to, you can't do it at all.
The one thing that you, I would suggest, having seen other jurisdictions, depending on what you scale your time to and what type of activity, you should let folks know who are collecting garbage, don't collect garbage at four-thirty or five in the morning. That may not be a violation of the resolution. To some neighborhoods that, not in this township and on the way, but in other townships, some folks come and start collecting at five A M.
We have a, oh, absolutely.
Fair enough.
We have one hundred percent.
There you go. Well, I wasn't aware, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, yeah. So that's something that, again, I guess like I said, you start pulling the thread.
No, we've had some. What's a decimal meter cost?
Like thirty bucks. So starting with. Did you get the number that you guys?
Get three of them.
I was going to squeeze four.
Call them, I'll have an app for it.
Download an app for it.
Yeah, the trustees will go ahead and think for those.
That'd be the number that we found on the common.
Yeah, it was the number that we found in the comparable.
As in maximum, correct. From the property line.
Yes.
It's right in the board's discretion.
The idea, based upon that, so the rationale is that.
I, I understand far too well what this is. Okay.
Get your own pen and paper.
I, I, this, okay.
No, you'll be pitting on already.
Well, no, it, it, so, so this is going to, I'm just going to reserve a comment.
Yeah, I get it.
This, this is well done. This isn't aimed at, my frustration is not aimed at you guys at all. This is well done, very well done. I just read through it again. I read it before the meeting, but I read through it again, and it's very comprehensive. I just fear that this isn't, there's no resolution to this challenge.
With these drives.
So to your point, I mean, it's a string that you pulled and there's just no.
Well, and I see it in every jurisdiction, and there is no perfect fit.
No.
No. Nothing valid at all.
No.
And the aggravation level that we're going to put on to the neighbors that.
We deal with the same thing with open burning all the time.
Very.
We have five, if someone's burning sticks, someone moves here from the city and they're like, I smell smoke. We moved to a township. Well, that's bothering them. That guy's burned sticks and that pit for fifty years. Well, he needs to put it out. You know, I mean, or there's neighbor disputes and they just don't like that neighbors that, you know, just.
I have a neighbor that lives down the road and she calls. And I'm like, I finally gave her my advice and call me.
So for the chief's point, what you also see, and again, within your discretion about how you have to manage the township's resources and the public health, law, rights, safety of the community, if John's officer is down there taking noise measurements, they're not available to respond to. So that's also.
So do we buy meters for the people that live next to the property?
Well, certainly.
Tell them I owe them like thirty dollars.
Thirty, yeah.
Get a group rate on Amazon. But, I mean, that's what this comes down to.
And I'm not saying that's not, I'm not saying that's not legitimate. I'm just saying that's part of the, not at all.
That's, that's.
Part of the calculus.
Yeah, exactly. And that's the concern of, that's one of the concerns is.
That's probably what they'll do. They'll probably buy them and call us and say, he's a twill. He better get over here.
Yeah.
Which, which is why, again, to their credit, they, they, they're giving you both and recommend passing both a civil and a criminal aspect of this.
Sure.
Because the criminal aspect has to be prosecuted by the Warren County Prosecutor, who does a great job, has great staff. And they have other cases to prosecute besides noise resolutions. They'll do it because they do their work and they do a great job doing it. But they have other, that's, that's implicated resources there. We have an opportunity to do it civilly, which would be a fine to be paid to the fiscal office. And then we can use it to.
Escalate.
Escalate fines to the general one. But if somebody says, I disagree with this, then we go to the county court and Judge Loxley gets to decide and it's like a civil case, which I prosecute. So there are no good, there are no good options in terms of, these are, these are, people disagree because they have their two processes and constitution right to do, you know? They, they disagree, come at it. Yeah, right. I mean, prove your case. Or in this case, make us prove our case.
Well, to Steve's point, I think we've got some time here to see if it's over.
That's true.
I don't think the, the business in question is done for the year, I would, it appears. So we can do a public meeting or open house or whatever we need to do.
Like a decimal meter?
Right there.
The other thing, the other thing the board can do is, is, you know, if they'd like have, not to make more work, or I can too, I'm happy to call up various law directors, but how these folks and their noise revolutions are to prosecute and how much are they saying?
Does it back that you have a meter regulations? Do people tend to pay attention?
That's the other, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to make up some calls to, you know, of the jurisdictions that we look at, happy to.
Be nice to know, sir, once you did this, did it have a.
Didn't have an effect.
Yeah, I'll do it. Absolutely. Pete, just a couple.
Yep.
I know the trash always pay attention to it. It's usually the first question they ask when I call, right? The formal ask of, hey, could you not go through, take more trails at four-thirty in the morning, you got a complaint? Or do you, does your jurisdiction have a noise resolution? The first question they, they want to be made.
Yeah, I don't want them changing my day because of this.
Something you said there.
He changes my day from Monday, then I got a bigger front. Then I'll start burning my trash. All of a sudden, they're like, all tea.
Well, that's great, right?
Just kidding.
There you go.
Grandma used to burn her trash and she'd crush her cans and take them to I J and throw them in the trash can on her way into the earth.
And Mr. Wade, I would also like to say on some, another topic is heartwarming and also probably about Floyd Partridge, Floyd Partridge, to see the presentation on the other day, the, the actual life-saving work that the police officer and EMS do. It's pretty cool to see. So congratulations to the chief. Thanks. And if you folks do that, made it do anything.
Yeah, you're right. Make sure they have gas in their car.
Yeah, right.
So not to belabor this point, but we want to make a public hearing concurrent with the trustee meeting night. Do you want to sit on the separate night?
That's another idea, good point.
I would assume we want to do it in the evening, but.
I'd say we do, personally, I'd say we do it as part of the meeting.
I'm just going to maybe suggest that, give it on the website for a while and let's see kind of.
We'll see in January.
See what, see what kind of, yeah, give it a month and a half on there. Let's see what kind of questions that come up before that. And then we'll see, we might get an idea of whether we're going to have a huge meeting or only ten people in the Andersons. See how well the snowplows are.
Government operations are invented.
As they always are.
I live far enough out there, all the noise is.
I think I would want to advertise the time for the hearing to be finite, defined amount of time.
Okay.
And if it needs to extend beyond that, just by, you just do. But I want to make sure that it's not an open-ended endeavor.
We were just talking about that.
Sitting here for three hours talking about it, say something over.
And I will call those respective law directors at least a time.
It is.
It is.
You guys work like five hours a day during the holidays.
Get that. Get that. That's a week during the holiday.
Thank you. Okay, so as a discussion on that, I think that's just as low as we don't have any action on that. We just decided. Claiming and suing.
Yeah, I have appointments for the board zone appeals. So the appointments of both these individuals from the past year, what to reappoint Sarah Melon to full membership and Andre Telemonte from a alternate to full-time.
Okay. You're not interested in advertising for anybody else? So these are good.
These are good individuals. I would hear they're a great job. We'll have one vacancy. So if you know anyone, I always sit on the bushes when we go by, see if I can get folk. I've not been successful this fall finding any people, but if you know anyone, happy to talk with them and bring them over.
I saw a thing, I saw somebody had a national night out. He was interested.
I, I've had individuals who have been interested, but then been not the.
Once I hear the time and after.
Yeah, the, the, I need information and they just don't forward. So they've not been responded, I guess is the best way for the next step. So.
Ends up red flag.
Yeah. So I mean, obviously I need consistent behavior, consistent attendance. And if you're not giving me the first step of following through with what you need, that's a great conversation the next time you come in, but we're not going to pursue.
I'd suggest if this is good, if they come and see you soon, soon, because I knew we had some things going on. Didn't know we were going to.
Yes, we're always looking for individuals for both the zone commission, board zone appeals. Happy to talk to any.
Would you, Jonah, like to have a, like to make a motion to reappoint these two individuals?
So.
Second.
Mr. Gavers.
Yeah, and Mr. Mears.
Yeah, Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sit, please.
Fire department just conservative.
It's not flying exactly. Nothing, nothing really to report. We got a lot going on.
Yeah, the ducks.
I think they're paddling underneath.
I think tomorrow they're going to pour the, the front.
Yeah, I just drove by before I came here tonight and they were leveling up.
It looks like it's all ready.
And they're going to get asphalt in by the end of the month.
They were standing there looking at it for about two hours today.
It's a good time.
Just had a survey.
You got a plumbing person.
It's, it's ready to go.
Do we, do we need the law director to stop by and help them out a little bit? Get the flowers in for them?
We're a special pro.
It looks good, looks great.
They took the curb down. You can see the footprint.
Yeah.
The asphalt gets in the road. I think the garage door should be up here now.
Good.
Okay, police department, anything you want on?
No, so just like the, just kind of cut and brush.
Just growing out his beard.
Cut and brush and getting some salt in.
Have, have you got plenty?
Got fifteen hundred tons in there right now.
I drove, I drove through there.
More than twice the capacity that we had before.
Yeah, well, I drove up through there with my wife. And she's, we, she goes, what is that? We needed, we needed a bigger salt bed. She goes, well, you accomplished that. I go, yes, we did.
Yes, we did. Well, if you listen to the weather every day with El Nino or whichever Nino it is, you're supposed to have a bad, a bad.
My wife said about the farmer's olmanac and something, which, when we moved to the farm, I used to tell her about the farmer's olmanac. Now she's telling me. So I guess she's been there all night to read it to me. So fun move.
What kind of book you getting?
I don't know. Only one involves sand.
Staff updates?
I'm not going to take it now. Guess we should approve the consent agenda.
Probably.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of them.
Second.
Mr. Mears.
Yeah, it is together.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any updates?
Christmas and spring broke right. So statistics for that, as one, as state as usual.
What year is it?
It is the.
Twenty-third?
Yes. Trade is supposed to take off at like eleven fifty-five.
My daughter got to tell me that, Dad, I'm not riding with you this year. The soccer team has been asked to be in front of you.
As they should.
As they should, apparently.
They could ride in the back of the pickup if they were.
I actually mentioned that and she said there's 24 of us plus coaches, it'd probably be a little tight. So I said, I think you earned the right to be wherever you want to be in the parade bag. Absolutely. So, pretty neat.
They should make them all.
Grand marshal.
Mr. Don Ross, super grand marshal this year, which I think is far past due, actually. But there are many accolades coming their way, they're all media stars right now, so. Lydia's going to be on channel two tomorrow with one of the teammates, so.
Yeah, I made a.
Try to get our TV in the back room, set up. Yeah, just activate and cycle. We'll see.
I did have one more thing, a reporter from the airport reached back out again and I conveyed the response that you had provided to me, she seemed interested in student trustees, if you were interested at all, just letting you know that she reached back out. Your choice. Well, if we need to talk about what our position is, again, because we don't want a lot of us to speak and have a different position than the other two. We were pretty clear. Upset on why we want it, which is what Jason wore, so we responded. I provided immediately for Mr. Mears' follow, spoke, and then passed the resolution. How much more she need? Well, maybe that's all she needs.
I don't think our position was changed at all. I think, I think a lot of that's coming from, because I have Cincinnati station, there's a lot of conjecture in Northern Kentucky and there's different opinions coming in about dispensary and things and they're looking to the Ohio area and more conservative areas of Ohio to see if.
Well, Northern Kentucky certainly has a history of, for liberal activists.
I was going to say, I was wondering where, how you're going to word that.
Liberal activist.
It's just saying their height's got, Chris Roddian really might not have been tobacco.
Yeah. Carbo Cruz has a four-year cruise now. People are upset with the United States, they could go on a cruise for four years. I don't know about that. Anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up?
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Gaver.
Yeah.
Mr. Mears.
Yeah, and Mr. Wade.
Yeah.